So I call this meeting to order. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Richardson. And Mr. Willer, if there are people who are watching, because I'm assuming since we are voting that there will be a public comment period, just let me know.
Yes, we do have two members of the media and one member of the public on the webinar right now.
Thank you. Dr. Richardson.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can someone say something so I can see if I can hear now?
Can you hear me?
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Your mic is off now.
Yeah, I got that. Yeah, appreciate it. Long as y'all can hear me, because I couldn't hear y'all a few minutes ago.
Oh, so Yanakai just handed off to you to introduce the item.
Oh, okay, all right. I'm sorry. Once again, we're back to talk about the CARES funding. As we mentioned on Monday, that we spent a significant amount of time in terms of trying to put the numbers together and provide a, we think is a sound approach in terms of trying to deliver various things, not only to the community, but also internally, to be able to provide funding to the various things that we found that were necessarily, that were necessary with any organization, as well as the funding that was provided to, you know, do things within the community. And with that said, out of the 4.1 million, we budgeted for 3.7, which leaves you a contingency reserve fund for about $424,000. And with that $424,000, we were asking to keep that due to, you know, the unexpected things that may come up between now and the end of this funding period. As we've mentioned before, that we had to utilize or spend these dollars by the end of the year. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Chris Cullen if you want to add anything from that.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of council. For the appropriation you have in front of you, I just want to note there were two very small changes. One was the discrepancy that Councilor Snook noted on Monday evening regarding, I believe it was the IT numbers. And then the other one was just simply under the business support and the actual appropriation itself. It just splits it out between business grants and the commercial district support. After talking with Mr. Angle a little bit after the, after the meeting, that that just makes the the transaction a little little easier to follow and cleans up the accounting and reporting. So those are the only, just like I said, two minor changes I would note from what you saw on Monday evening.
And I'm sorry, do we have a, do we have this electronic copy of that sent to us?
It's loaded to the website.
Okay, okay, that's fine. I just, our inboxes are really a fun place right now, so.
Yep, and it includes the new documentation as well as the copy from Monday.
Thank you very much.
And I would just like to, you know, and I brought this up Monday, and we've been getting a lot of feedback from the, our citizens about the concern that there is too, you know, many dollars being directed to, you know, other priorities and not, and a lot of concern about the instability that this pandemic, with all its unknowns could cause, and especially wanting people to be housing stable during this time. And we have to understand where those concerns are coming from. So I'd just would like to know if we were able to look at that. On the other hand, if we are talking about bringing our citizens back into the buildings, we want, I mean, bringing our employees back into the buildings, we want them to be as safe as possible. So, you know, I understand the need for that. Just if we've looked at it and ensured that, you know, we are allocating money to the right places is something that I hope, you know, has happened and that we are, you know, that we don't end up in a situation where we will have wished that we have done, would have done something differently. And even the recommendation of maybe putting a little bit more in the contingency fund to see what the greatest needs become, you know, in the coming months may give, you know, more comfort to the community.
I, I mean, I agree with all of that.
I would also like to, I mean, I would like to have this kept a very, very close eye on. Also, as we're doing it and that anything, many of this is just an estimate. And as I put in the email, I also, any contracting services, I really want to do our best to make sure that we are employing people in our city, doing those contracting services to keep our economy continuing and keeping that money within our economy. And especially not looking at out of state. I mean, I do understand that we have requests for proposal that we have to follow and that that is legally binding. And at times, there might be out of state contractors who meet those requirements better than our local contractors do. I do know there was some changes in some request for proposal laws that came out July 1st. They're going to be coming out July 1st. Um, but again, I don't know how much of that is going to be focusing on local versus. Anyway, I would like really to keep a close eye on these expenditures and that let anything above that we don't need is going into our emergency funding. Um, I also wanted to kind of clarify what we're expecting to get on the, from VHDA in a separate, because I was under the impression we're going to be getting some money from them also to help with the homeless, with ESG stuff. And then I received word last night from somebody that it looked like that funding was going to be much less than we had originally anticipated.
Hi, this is Kaki. So the Department of Housing and Community Development, which is actually the organization that funnels that ESG money now. So DHCD has given us about $234,000 of extra money as part of our contract with the continuum of care. And they started that first infusion came actually in March. And so that money, well, actually you all will appropriate that money in July. And then we're told that there's this rent and mortgage relief fund also coming. The money is coming fast and furious. And so we're not really clear. Initially, we thought it would actually be 50 million for the state. And then it got reduced to 20 million. So I wonder if those things are getting combined in your history there. And it looks like the planning district commission has agreed to be our administrator, our local administrator for those funds. Because the funds that will be coming for rent and mortgage relief will be distributed across all the counties in Charlottesville. So the amount we get will be very small compared to the volume of need. So I think it will be supplemental for sure. There will be people who will be assisted through that, through rent and mortgage relief. I will say that they're talking about the cap and the threshold to being 80% of AMI. And that, that 80%, of AMI is calculated after the pandemic. So if you lost your housing, you lost your job, your income is calculated after the loss of the job, which makes more people eligible than would be traditional. Think back to the stimulus from 2010 and 2011. So this is aimed at that group, not necessarily the traditionally rent overburdened group, but a sort of a newly rent, a new, a new group that's in need of rent relief. So we don't know what the total will be at this point. We anticipate it will, will, the need will vastly outstrip the, yeah, exactly.
And I think that's some of the concern, since there are so many unknowns and we don't know how great the need will be. People are concerned that we'll get to a point where we can't assist even, but we already know we probably won't be able to assist everybody. The community that just wants to, you know, have a little bit more comfort that we are prioritizing the, you know, safety and well-being of, you know, of our citizens who may have housing challenge. We have a pretty good situation right now where our employees are able to function pretty well from home. And if we had to spend less money in one category and put more money in an area with, that we would not be able to resolve just by simply have people maybe stay out of the buildings longer. Those are the type of things I think people will feel comfortable with at least knowing that we are considering.
Let me just, Mayor, let me just go back to say, you know, I just want to answer a couple of questions that was asked or statements that were made in terms of the accounting of this. We will keep a close eye on that, as we mentioned on Monday, through our budget, as well as our finance teams, to be able to keep a running tally of these expenditures from these various categories. And if there is any additional funding or things come in lower than projected, we'll put back into the fund. And also too, as the mayor mentioned, to talk about the buildings and ensure that the employees are safe. There's a lot of things that we have to do in terms of, you know, getting our buildings, our old buildings up to speed in terms of being able to provide the safety, the safe conditions for our employees to come back to a healthy environment. So there was a lot of factors weighed into this, as well as, you know, ways that we could work throughout this COVID situation and be able to provide our employees with options of still being able to telework and then provide the necessary services that they can remotely through our IT requests. And then the last thing is to, you know, like I said before, to help out the folks that are in the, you know, business community who do provide jobs and opportunities to our residents who live here, as well as to provide dollars to support our minority businesses in the community. But and above and beyond that, too, the last thing I'd just like to say is, yes, because you were just talking about as far as the community support in terms of putting the money into those different programs through the human and social services to provide those resources for our residents.
And I know we brought up on Monday, I'm sorry, just real quick, timeline. When do we feel that we'll know whether some of these dollars might be more flexible to allocate to other areas? And then when will we also want to go ahead and exercise the contingency funds? Because there is a timeline by which we need to spend these dollars.
I would say basically within next month and a half or two at the most, because, you know, it takes some time to be able to go through the different processes that we have to go to, to be in compliance with the law, as well as to get these things in place in various parts of the city to be able to move forward. And I, I'm going to say probably within the next month and a half or two, that we will be able to provide you with more information. And Chris may be willing to expand upon that.
No, I would concur with that timeframe. I think it's going to be, you know, this is going to start, you know, occupying a significant chunk of my time and various members of the lead team in terms of ensuring that we're meeting the needs of both the community and, and our employees and the public, as well as ensuring that we're not going to leave any money on the table. As you, as you recall, the money has to be spent by December 30th of this year. And so we want to, you know, we have that deadline in mind as well, as well as just the evolving nature of this pandemic. I think, you know, as I said on Monday evening, I think we're going to, we're still going to be encountering some things we haven't experienced yet. And so again, I think this, this is going to continue to be a major part of a lot of our workloads. And certainly this, these funds are a piece of that.
Can I just ask a couple of clarifying questions about the portion that's deemed operational modifications? It looks like we've got funding from the CARES Act for operational modifications of $1,164,000. You've got costs estimated at $1,343,000. So there's $179,000 that we are apparently paying from some other, from other, some other account or some other source. Where is that other $179,000 coming from?
It, it, it isn't, what that is, is basically from us in the, in the preliminary planning of this, about the appropriation that were put in there and then us slashing some of those proposed expenditures. And that's how we got to that number.
Okay, so when it, you've got stage one and stage two of facility modifications and you've got $0 allocated for the stage two, do I infer from that that you don't intend to go ahead and do the stage two unless there's just a whole bucket of money left over?
That's correct.
Okay. The questions, as I look at the, and it, it seems that the, the enhanced cleaning of facilities, $287,571, is that something where it'll be sort of on an as needed basis? It might not all turn out, it might not turn out to all be needed?
I can answer that. That would be correct, sir.
Okay. The other, other items, I mean, there are a lot of very specific items. Dumpster services for River View and other parks, $2,500 that aren't, aren't seriously an issue. But as we look at the, sort of the big ticket items, the, the biggest ticket item is changes to the ventilation systems, $322,000. I take it that that is something that you believe is necessary for the, basically for the health and safety of our workforce?
So that, that was a consideration in also following suit what UVA is doing for their facilities in terms of increasing their HVAC systems capability to trap or kill viruses. So in, in addition to the better filtration, the UV is one step above that to provide additional protection. You know, it's possible that we could do the filtration and see how it works and then do the UV, which is the added expense is a separate process or a separate project. And then if it's not required, then that money could be used elsewhere.
How soon, I mean, supposing you decided, okay, yes, July 1, we're going to put in the high efficiency filters. Is there a, a way that you could decide, let's say by September 1, this is working or this is not working? And if it's not working, then you go ahead and you spend the extra $300,000 on the entire upgrade of the system?
Yeah, I, I believe that we would know by fall, once the building's fully occupied. And we have changed out at City Hall, the filters to MR 14 using existing funding currently. This would be additional funding because the filter changes are 20% more than they would be normally because of the high density of the filter, in addition to disposal costs and some additional maintenance.
So is the 300, is the $300,000 then specifically for adding the UV sanitizing light to the system?
No, it's for ongoing filter, purchase of materials for filters and maintenance of changing the filters, as well as the UV systems.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I interrupted you.
I just wanted to say that if we are not having this conversation about what our needs are in the buildings around also employee safety and whether we're bringing everybody back into the building, we don't want to do less because in reality, no one really knows what kills this virus. So we're going to have people back in the buildings. We're going to want to do everything that we can do. But I also think that we can have different conversations about how to prioritize the resources. And if we can't safely bring everybody back in the building because we, you know, we, that we allocate the resources to a housing need, that then we are by default making the decision that we are not going to bring all the employees back into every building. So I hope that we're having that kind of holistic conversation and not chancing things and seeing what, you know, what works or what doesn't work. I think if we know that this will work best, then we are going to want to do that to ensure that our employees are safe.
Mayor, and I would concur with that. As part of the transition recovery team, it's a kind of a crossbreed between several different departments that are in charge of reopening. That's a big piece of this is the ongoing infectious control and making sure that the employees not only feel safe, but that they are safe. And a big piece of the work that we're doing has to do with mitigating a lot of these things. And so as we go through the reopening, it's not just going to the most expensive physical, you know, change or modification to bring people back. We're starting with things like PPE schedule changes so that not, you know, you don't have all the employees in a space at one time, but, you know, staggered approach, encouraging telecommuting, things like that. So the very last thing that we want to do is spend money on hard, physical changes. But there are some things that are going to need to be done in terms of, you know, screening and certainly in the HVAC system and then the deep cleaning if we do have an incident where somebody does come up COVID positive.
How many units are we talking about throughout the city that we're needing to potentially retrofit?
You know, I wish I could give you that number off the top of my head, but we have an equipment inventory that was used to is the basis for this number. And when you look at City Hall, if I recollect, you know, essentially the rooftop unit, it services all of City Hall, part of the PD and part of the Mickey building. What it doesn't service is the city council chambers, which would be a separate unit. So, you know, we've been having conversations about, again, you know, and I'll use the analogy that our facility manager gave me. He said, if you have a rowboat with two holes in it and you only plug one hole and say you did something, does that really do anything?
I was just kind of wondering, I know.
Oh, Marty's trying to talk and I can't hear him. For whatever reason, Marty, we can't hear you.
HVAC units across all government buildings.
Sorry, how many?
57.
That's a lot of units.
It is a lot of.
Is that including schools?
That does not include schools, no.
That makes that number a little bit more understandable now.
That works out there basically $6,000 per unit on an average basis.
And you have to take into consideration, we have large rooftop package units as well as smaller units. You know, some of the facilities that we have are actually residential properties that are used for office space. So their requirements are going to be much different.
So could I ask a question of Ms. Demick? She's still on, oh, there you are, okay. You had sent me a nice detailed breakdown after I had sent you an email about our, the other money we're spending on housing. And I'm curious about one of the breakdowns you gave us. I, I had mentioned the $654,000 in CARES Act funding. You said $324,000 of those funds would go toward the need to support people experiencing homelessness in hotels through December. $240,000 of the funds would go to responding to emergency needs of the hotline. That total is $564,000. Is there another $90,000 someplace?
I have to go look at the document that I sent you on my other screen. Let's see. So 324, oh, yes. So the rest of that money, sorry, I get what you're asking now. The rest of the money that we requested for community support is for feeding programs.
I'm sorry.
For feeding programs, for the probably four or five agencies that have done remarkable Herculean work starting in March to fill the need, even with supply chain problems and without volunteers and changing their delivery model. And we anticipate while there's some flexibility around USDA feeding programs for the summer and maybe into the fall, depending on how the schools end up coming back, that still won't meet the need to match the families of those kids. So the kids may get one or two meals during the school time, but they, the rest of the family is not going to be able. So those agencies will be continued to be called upon for this pretty dramatic increase in local need.
Thank you.
What, you mentioned the, the expectation is the money for housing homeless folks will, will not be sufficient in order to meet the goal of at least until the end of December, correct? Is there any sort of estimate about when the money necessary in order to maintain that may run out?
It really would be impossible for me to say, because the minute I say that, this afternoon, we're going to get a call from someone who has $100,000 that's coming from the Fed. It's just happening too quickly for me to be able to answer that question sufficiently or accurately. At this point, it looks like we probably with these two sources of funds combined with what's coming from Department of Housing and Community Development and from the county, we probably can get through October and that will, that will fund all of the hotel rooms, staffing and security costs. We anticipate there's a private donor who has agreed to support us, this support T-Jack frankly, after this, after our, these available government funds. And we continue to be assured by the Department of Housing and Community Development that there is a third wave of housing money coming and that that money is specifically to move people into housing, not necessarily to continue to support emergency operations costs, but to actually move people from hotels into housing. And so our estimate for the end of December, a sort of, we hope or assumes that sometime in November and December, that third wave actually arrives. If it doesn't, then we'll be having a whole nother set of conversations when we do our check-ins in September and October. And anyway, so that's, that's how I can answer that question without actually answering it.
And with the community resource hotline, what is the current amount of money available in that? And then sort of what is the, even just like a rough estimate on a monthly basis, the amount of requests coming in versus the amount of money that will be in it with these new monies coming into it? And if those trend lines hold, when would that hotline run out of money?
I can get close to that, that answer. We, we calculated that the pre-COVID need per year was about $350,000 for the requests that we had. If we were to say yes to everyone who called, we would need about $350,000. If we said yes to promoting the hotline or sharing the number with other people, which is of course what you generally want to use a hotline so everyone has access to it, then that number would be close to $500,000 a year pre-COVID. The only sort of estimate we have for the increased need is what happened with the community foundation. And we went from one part-time answer of the hotline to to I think we had 26 people at some point who were answering the phone line or calling people back. During that time, we just had, you know, four or 500 calls a day coming through the various mechanisms. So I, I don't know what the, how I could calculate that. I will say the difference for us is the community foundation was doing a direct financial benefit. So the individual who called got the money. Our money, the pathways money that you all generally have allocated goes directly to a landlord or utility. So that the payment actually goes to the debt holder, not to the person who calls unless there might be like a, well, even if there was a car repair, we would pay the car repair place, not the person. So we anticipate that we have the money that you all recently appropriated from the Department of Human Services fund balance, which was $250,000, I believe, maybe $300,000. That is in the existing pool. We have about $75,000 left of what we had going at the very tail end of the community foundation money. So this combined would give us slightly less, I think, than $600,000. Mr. Smoak is better at math than I am, so maybe that number is slightly above 600. But I think that will allow us to say yes to most people. But it will also, I will say that we'll be providing a limited benefit. And so we anticipate that at some point, we'll say we're going to provide $1,000 towards rent, even if your rent is considerably higher. We have agreed that historically, people have only been able to access this pool once in a year, but we've obviously suspended that some time ago because based on this crisis. So I, I think we'll spend the money by December 30th, but I, I'm not sure if I can tell you that it will go by September, October. And some large part that will determine on how many people we have answering the hotline and responding to the need.
And is the only, so the only rent relief, you know, the hotline may be indirect rent relief in some ways, but is the only direct rent relief program that reallocated money from the CAF?
So far, that's the direct rent relief. I will say that we spend probably 95% of the amount of the money that we distribute through the community resource hotline is for rent. So even if we don't call it a rent relief program, it serves as one.
And I think it's important for us to know that if we move to that, you know, just partial payment of rent, even though I understand trying to at least help more people, even if we can't help them, you know, meet their whole need, they're probably not going to be able to get the resources from anyone where else. So, you know, I just encourage you all to just think about that a little bit because, you know, it may still lead to the situation that we are, you know, trying to avoid. Most people, if they can't pay the entire amount, I know that, you know, the mortgage company, sometimes if you don't send the full amount in, they will not accept it. Right? And so you have people enter into foreclosure and stuff, you know, even when they attempted to make partial payments, they just hold it in the account. So that's just something, you know, to think about. And I'm sure landlords will still evict even if they accept the partial, you know, you know, payment unless they're, you know, they're, you know, kind and understanding in the situation. And we just don't know who those individuals are. So I think it's, I get why we make decisions like that, but it may be better for us to, you know, help, you know, meet, you know, their whole needs instead of supplemental in a way. Because we know that if they don't have it there, it's highly unlikely that they'll get the remaining balance from anywhere. So just to.
Thank you. We're working on the protocols right now with the hope of reopening the new line on July 4th. And so, or July, I think that would be July 5th. But, so that's really helpful. We were toying around whether we might make the decision based on household size instead of being sort of by caller. And we've been sort of looking at other models and none of them, of course, feel sufficient or satisfying. But it's possible that we should help somebody avoid eviction completely this month and then tackle what happens next month as opposed to sort of just barely putting a Band-Aid on for the month ahead.
And then another similar question related to the food relief expenditures around 90,000. What's sort of the, again, with the other ones, sort of the balance of what it's being spent on versus what the need or how quickly those expenditures could be drawn down?
So to be perfectly honest, this is most of the money that we're talking about for the feeding program is to reimburse for existing costs after March. So this is not necessarily prospective. It's going to ease the pain for them prospectively by covering costs back to March. But it's, I think it's, the need is pretty dramatic for all of the feeding programs. But we'll say also that the number of donors have really stepped up to the plate and to support some of these feeding programs. And we've been, all of them sourced from the Blue Ridge Area Food Bank. And none of the sort of feeding programs that have been happening in the community can happen without their incredible support and capacity to sort of override supply chain issues. But this is, it's not, it's not going to serve as a rescue for them. That's, that's complete and it's not necessarily going to cover their existing need going forward. It's just, it's going to be in recognition for their efforts today, to be perfectly honest.
And what, I know for the, the community has gotten a breakdown of the expenditures for the, the buildings and operational expenditures, but even just at a high level, what are some of the expenditures in the tech and business support areas?
Yes, the, the major ones is making sure that we do have the necessary support as well as devices and making sure that we do have remote access to be able to do our various business throughout the city, which we don't have, you know, a lot of the connections that we need in order to have that continuity of services throughout our various facilities. And then also above and beyond that, when we talk about our, our social services and being able to provide our staff with opportunities to perform the services through webcams instead of having to go out and interface directly with the public or the clients that they're serving, as well as to provide that same technology in their conference rooms that they have. So in above and beyond that, too, you know, we have talked about like our cybersecurity that we want to make sure that we have as well as our back office system support. There's a various number of things that we're trying to use in terms of technology and trying to enhance our services and then to provide all the services we can to our clients in the community without impacting our, without impacting the health of our, our employees.
And then is the, that bucket of business money of around 800,000, is that just grants to small businesses? Are there multiple different programs underneath that?
I'm going to turn it over to Chris Pingle, if he's on the line, so he can explain that a little bit more in terms of the business grid.
I don't know if Chris is on the list right now.
Okay.
I remember there being two buckets, a 750 and then a 75, and I'm trying to pull up that spreadsheet.
I remember with the 750, half was going to be designated towards minority business grants and half to regular business grants. All business grants were going to be with 50 employees or less. And there would be micro grants or loans, it's all grants, no loans, for one to 10 people businesses. And then there was above the 10 to 50 people businesses, as well as the 75 was going to be used for various hand washing stations, some advertising and signage to help with directing people to opened businesses and also as to safety protocols.
And that was along the corridor from the corner West Main to the mall.
It's, yeah, exactly. It's all the way down.
And the final question, is that contingency of around 400,000, would that, would be accurate to say that's sort of a contingency in case the cost estimates for the operational expenses run higher than is estimated just because the level of uncertainty there? Or is there another planned need or use for that contingency?
I can speak to, I think, I think what we've estimated in the operational end is going to be pretty close. It's, it's not to exceed estimates, if you will.
We're making, I go back to what I said earlier, a decision to release those contingency funds for other things. And it sounds like council wants that to go into community support areas.
Yeah, and that's fine. What we did to spend a little bit more on the contingency is to be able to have those dollars if something does go wrong and we need, I mean, you know, and we need additional things by the time, you know, throughout this period. Because as we talk about even with the budget, we're, you know, still uncertain times. So just to have the additional funds on hand if something does occur. But as was mentioned, once we get out of that first month and a half to two months, we'll know a little bit more where we are in terms of the overall expenditures and what probably will not get spent and be able to put that back into the, the dollars that are going to be used for community support.
Well, then, I'll go ahead, Sina.
I would just like to say that I, for one, would like to prioritize as any monies come in, hopefully underestimate that they are going to community support as a priority.
That's fine.
Well, and the emails and requests we've been getting from the community is to put at least 1 million into community support, which 350,000 or so takes us there. So I would certainly want the contingency to be used for that. And it's difficult because obviously there's limited expenses. But I would say, you know, if we're forced to a decision where it came down to community support versus even one of the buckets in the business support, I think the community support is a greater priority, recognizing that they're both vital. It's just how to weigh different priorities. So, but certainly, you know, if there's contingency funds aren't needed to be used, even just 350,000 of that gets us to that $1 million.
Could I offer a wording change to the resolution based on the discussion today?
Sure.
In your appropriation resolution, the, the second be it further resolved clause says the city manager or his designee may on authorization from the city manager or his designee be transferred between categories as needed to meet unforeseen circumstances. And then I might add a clause inconsistent with the council's direction. I only say that because it sounds like, you know, just if you leave it as unforeseen circumstances, I don't really think Dr. Richardson could realistically transfer any of these funds to the contingency. If it's just, you know, right unforeseen circumstances is much more, you know, obviously spontaneous. It sounds like though the council's preference is really if they're surplus funds from these other categories, we'd like to direct the city manager, he has the authority to transfer from one category to the other, but we'd like to, per our direction, we'd like the city manager to transfer it into the contingency reserve. I'm, I'm sorry, from the contingency reserve fund to the community support. And that, that language would give him the authority because right now, as it's worded, like I said, unforeseen circumstances. I don't really think that's really the legal authority he would need to do what, what the council seems to be asking.
I would agree with that.
I'm in agreement.
Do we need to vote on that?
I think when we, when we motion to, I'll just leave that. Are we ready for that?
I think so. I hope so.
I move we adopt the resolution with the appropriation of the coronavirus aid relief and economic act, the CARES funds at $4,123,776 with the adjustment in the appropriation language to sit, to read. It may authorization, may on authorization from the city manager or his designee be transferred between categories as needed to meet unforeseen circumstances and consistent with the council's direction.
Second.
Ms. Thomas, will you take the vote, please?
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
All right, that carries. Thank you all for all the work that you put in to this and all the efforts that you put in to making sure that the citizens and employees are safe during this time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Really do. And thank you for taking the extra time to be, to further explain things now publicly. It's, it's very helpful and I really appreciate it.
Welcome.
So Mayor Mark, I have our closed motion and I guess we just need to make sure we know where we're going. Do you have that?
Yeah, I sent it.
Are we ready then?
Yeah.
All right, pursuant to section 2.23712 of the Virginia Code, I hereby move that city council closes open meeting and convene in a closed session as authorized by Virginia Code, section 2.23711A1 for discussion of the performance of the Charlottesville city manager, the Charlottesville police chief, Charlottesville council chief of staff and the Charlottesville city attorney.
I'm sorry, before we do that, Mr. Willer, was there anyone who wanted to speak publicly? And we already voted, but.
I'll be happy to ask. If anyone would like to raise their hand, they can click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. And we do have one person. Rory Stolzenberg, you're on the city council.
Good afternoon, council. Rory Stolzenberg, live on Water Street between First and Second. I think you know why I'm here. It's been completely radio silence from the city since Monday night. I'm a little bit confused and I'm eager to hear what you all have to say. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else, Mr. Will?
There is not.
All right, thank you.
So does my motion still hold? I mean, go ahead.
No, I think we can just, do she need to read it again, Mr. Blake?
Yeah, ma'am, she would just need a second.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All right, Ms. Thomas.
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Thank you.
And council, you'll return to this webinar link after your closed session to certify.
Great.
Thank you. And just make sure everyone that you close out of the link.